Good evening, I'd like to call to order this the second in the series of budget workshop meetings for April 12th, 2018. Please rise for a moment of silence. The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin, the departments on tonight's agenda are the library, the building department, animal control, the public utilities commission, and the three divisions of the public utilities commission, electric, water, and sewer. And I'm going to ask the council for each department if we have questions for the library. No hands? Thank you for coming. If you want to come up anyway, you can, but... Building department. No hands for the building department. Thank you for coming. Safe drive home. Animal control department. No questions for animal control. Actually, before I finish, Madam Clerk, could you please call the role of the council?
Thank you. Thank you. Fishbein?
Yes, here.
Thank you. Laffin? Laterno?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morganstein? Chertel? Testa?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
And Chairman Savoni?
Here, thank you. Back to the call of the departments for the public utilities commission in general. Are there questions? No hands. Electric division, questions? We do have questions for the electric division. Please stay. And you might as well come forward. Water division, questions for the water division? Sewer division? I know you're intertwined, but you might not get sewer questions. All right, good evening, gentlemen. When you take your seats, please remind us who you are for the record.
Good evening, Richard Hendershot, Director of Public Utilities.
Good evening, Tony Bukary, General Manager of Wallingford Electric.
Thank you. And Tom Sullivan, the Electric Division Business Office. So how are things in electric?
Well.
Good.
Do you have any opening remarks?
Um, not, nothing in particular, Mr. Chairman. We've introduced ourselves. I would like to hit a few high notes, and then we'll welcome your questions. Let's see, what other things I'm looking for? Yet, uh, yes, thank you, Tom. We note that the budget, you know, we estimate our revenues with a bottom-up forecast of sales and apply the rates that we know are, have already been approved, and apply them to those sales projections. So the revenues reflect that. We've eliminated one full-time position. The budget does not include any labor increases because none of the contracts that are in play at the electric division are settled at the moment, and so no wage increases are included in there. The, um, some highlights from the capital side is there's, um, there's monies in here for a auto transfer scheme at North Wallingford Substation. Storm events recently have pointed out the need for that. We are overhauling one of our eight power transformers. We're doing about one a year of those. There's nearly a quarter of a million dollars for replacing aged underground cable in the Broadview Drive area. You'll see a steep year-to-year increase in transportation costs and capital. That's because the current year's budget only had a few small vehicles in it, and we're going to replace one of our large Digger Derrick's with a new truck in the upcoming budget. So those are sort of the highlights, and we would entertain any questions that you might have.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. Looking at the revenue, line, page sixty-seven, line four fifty-four, rent from electric property, what is that?
That is largely poll attachment fees. Comcast and several third-party data, business-to-business communications firms, things of that nature.
And, um, do they get like a better rate than if they put up the polls themselves? How does that work?
They, all the polls in town are jointly owned between ourselves and Frontier. And one firm or the other will have jurisdiction on the poll. It's their responsibility to maintain the poll, maintain the poll and replace it. But there is a joint poll agreement between, in all towns in Connecticut, between the power company and the phone company. And then all other attachers pay an attachment fee to each of the joint poll owners.
Okay, where is the rent, like, from the property that LS Power uses? Where does that show in the budget?
That is, that came up separately. Okay, thank you. That is on page seventy. Towards the top, if you look under other revenue, line four eighteen.
Okay.
That is the rent from CMEC for the former Pierce plant and from LS Power for Wallingford Energy.
And is that paid on a monthly basis or an annual?
We receive it monthly, but that's the annual amount you see there.
Now contrast that with the pilot payment that goes to the town in lieu of taxes.
That's about 1.9 million dollars.
Yeah, is that paid in a lump sum or is that paid monthly?
Monthly.
But the projection... Okay, I'm not going to assume. I'll look at that. But okay, thank you. I'm just going on. The, the legal fee, or the outside services on page sixty-nine, line nine twenty-three, is that where I'm to understand that the legal fees for the ongoing CMEC situation would reside?
Yes.
And I noticed that you're requesting in addition to what, well, what else is in that line? Is there, is there anything else in that line?
Yes, there is. If you'll give me a moment.
Just as proportionate charges, and there was an increase.
Yeah, I'll, um, it is the proportionate charges that we pay the town, our share of the law department, finance department, which includes purchasing in the tax office, and the personnel department.
And of lines nine twenty-three, do you have an amount that's attributable to the, to those items?
Well, we're, we're budgeting in seventeen eighteen for the town, $793,500, and an additional eighty-six hundred for our share of the town's financial audit.
Current year budget, yeah.
Oh, that's the seventeen eighteen, I'm sorry. The eighteen nineteen, yes, it's eight hundred and five thousand dollars and change for the services that the town provides us.
Okay, so then am I to assume that the balance is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is attributable to possible more legal with regard to CMEC?
We've budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, no, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for efforts involving the CMEC arbitration after the thirtieth of June.
Now let's conceptually say that it came to your attention that you needed eight hundred thousand dollars, let's just say, I'm not scaring anybody, for the CMEC litigation going forward. Is there any bar on you using this account for that?
I'm sorry, is there any?
Is there any bar on you using this account line for that? Because you didn't create a new account line when, when you engaged in this endeavor. So it's lumped in, and there's over a million dollars in this line.
Correct. Well, the eight hundred thousand of the million is, is what we pay the town for what we call proportionate charges. The, your specific question about CMEC, if we became aware of an additional eight hundred thousand dollars in costs that were coming, we couldn't commit to doing them until we amended the budget and added funds to this account, because this is the account out of which that, those bills should be paid.
By what agreement? Is there a writing that requires you to compensate the town for those other items?
I'm not, I have to, the process was in place when I, long before I came here, I'd have to ask the comptroller about that.
There's, there's not an agreement. They are a part of the town, so administratively they must pay that. I mean, that, the accounting is done by the accounting office, so it's not a voluntary thing. That has to be paid, and it, it doesn't require a contract. They're part of the town administration.
Understood, but just like, and I don't necessarily want to go down this road, a decision was made that they retain the rental income from the LS property and from the CMEC situation. I, I, I guess a decision could be made to defer money from this account to go for another, to be balanced out differently. That decision could be made without coming back to the council.
Well, they, they have to pay the proportionate charge. There wouldn't be enough money in there. The proportionate charge Rick is saying is eight hundred thousand out of that million. Is that what you stated?
Yes, sir.
So the proportionate charge has to be paid.
It's internal expenses, though. They're part of the town of Wallingford. The majority of that, I think, was for legal or the town, right?
No, no, that eight hundred thousand, that's, if the CMEC arbitration were not happening, it would still be eight hundred and five thousand, four hundred and three dollars.
Understood, but of that eight hundred and somewhat thousand dollars, what does that comprise?
That is the, the time in the tax office where the, those employees receive the monthly bills of the electric division, open the envelopes post the payments. It is our share of the ongoing activities in the purchasing office, where they handle bids and purchase orders and that sort of thing. It's our share of the financing, the personnel department, as they do postings, advertisements, test applicants, union negotiations, the ongoing activities of that office. It's our share of the law department, right away work, contracts, agreements, all that sort of thing.
Yeah, which is, it's the legal. I, I said that a portion of the eight hundred thousand is legal, provided by the town.
Correct, yes. You know, the actions of, you know, Jerry and Janice and Jeff and the, the other workers in the, in the office.
And the decision for the electric division to compensate general government for those things is, is an internal decision that could be changed. That's my only...
It won't be changed.
Okay.
They have to pay, and this comes out of the electric rates. It is unfair if the tax rate is paying for things that should be paid for out of the utilities and their use of general government facilities. So that's never been changed. That, that is what they owe in order to maintain a, an enterprise fund viability. It, it would be not proper accounting to have the town subsidize the electric division for their, the efforts put forth by those departments.
I agree. It's an administrative decision.
And that means it happens, period.
Well, if I, if I may as well, on the reciprocal side, if you see the comptroller's office budget, my office budget, if you will, my department's budget, you'll see a line item in there for work performed by the IT crew on behalf of the financial, let's say, aspects of it, because those folks are employees of the, of the electric division. So we, 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 we pay the, the electric division out of the comptroller's budget in that year for the previous year's audited costs, if you will. So it's about a hundred, it's a hundred and forty-something thousand dollars this year. It's about, you'll see it when we get to my, the comptroller's.
I, I see it. I, I don't disagree that that is presently what happens, but let me give you this scenario, since we're going to, I guess, fight about this.
Oh, I'm not fighting. I'm just trying to explain.
I didn't want to fight about this. I just wanted to just establish. So anyway, so the electric division comes to us for a large appropriation for legal expenses for, let's say, the ongoing CMEC litigation. This body denies that. My only point was that the administration could defer expenditure or change their policy with regard to the other expenses and allow, and allow the money to be expended. It's possible without our approval. I would, that's, I mean...
Not possible as long as I'm here.
Agreed.
Okay.
Is, is your position at this time?
No, it's my position, period. It's irresponsible under the proper accounting of costs. Enterprise Fund is enterprise fund. If we're not going to treat them as an enterprise fund, then that's a whole different story, and that's not going to happen, not as long as I'm here.
I hear...
You don't play games with the money. Never have, and as far as I'm concerned, if I'm ever aware of it, there will be consequences unpleasant, because we are rules we obey, and that's it.
I hear what you're saying, but we just had an enterprise fund with the ambulance, and there was a ten percent portion, I think up to ten percent, that we took from general government to supplant that. So in that particular instance, we didn't abide by.
What was the rule on the establishment of that enterprise fund? And it was written right into the rule. What was it?
I, I know that if it didn't, if it didn't work, it was going to go away.
It was ten percent in order to have it last long enough to see if it would work, and we found out it wouldn't work. It was not going away. In fact, it was probably getting worse. So then the enterprise fund came to an end.
Understood.
We never breached that rule, no different than we wouldn't breach this rule. It's not going to happen with us subsidizing the electric division. The rates should bear the cost of electric division functions.
Understood.
Just as when they perform functions for general government, we reimburse them for the cost when we use Chris Luckt or others with IT or other, other facets, we reimburse them, because that is improper. But why would we change that? We're not going to play games. We're not going to try to hide things under rugs or anything else. That's the way we do business.
Understood. Just, you're the one who said, going to treat enterprise fund like an enterprise fund, and I'm just pointing out that with the ambulance, we didn't treat the money as sacrosanct.
Craig, you're looking straight at me, and you can seriously say that somehow we breached our rules on the enterprise fund when the fund itself stated there was a ten percent subsidy?
And that could be changed at any time.
But was it changed?
No.
No. So what are we talking about here?
I'm just establishing that it is possible. That's it. I didn't want to fight about this.
Right, you're saying it could change, and I'm telling you, as long as I'm here, that will not change. If someone else is sitting where I am, then you'll have to go through the conversation again. But it's not going to change as long as I'm here.
Fine. I'm sick of the rate payers spending a lot of money on legal expenses that never should have been paid, and I'm looking for it to end.
I believe it will, and it'll be interesting to see if there's any changes in attitudes as a result of the results.
So let's move on to page seventy-one, line three ninety-one, which is labeled office furniture and equipment. So I'm looking at the history to start with. The actual ending, January of thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, was you only expended sixty-one dollars, but what was appropriated was forty thousand. Can you just explain what's going on there?
Well, to date, hang on a second, three ninety-one.
You have capital carry-forward funds that are available, and those would have been used first.
And they wouldn't show up.
Don't show in this budget document. They'll show in our monthly financials. I can get you that figure if you...
Well, the other, I mean, if we carry it over another line, you'll see that even for the whole year of two thousand and seventeen, you only spent half of that, which would include those carryovers.
So the question is, what was the forty thousand for that we haven't touched so far this year? Erased those lines. I don't know what was in there before.
Rick, just to maybe help, it could be because that column that the council sees only goes through transactions through one thirty-one.
I see it now. Here are the makeup of the forty thousand dollars in this year's budget. Ten thousand dollars for just miscellaneous furniture and equipment, desks, file cabinets, chairs, things of that nature, not, not specific plants, things wear out. You'd be surprised what a chair costs these days.
Oh, I know.
Five thousand dollars for meter-reading devices. That's, we budget five thousand dollars every year in case we need to replace one of the six or seven handheld meter-reading devices. That's about what a new one costs. The, then there's fifteen thousand dollars that's budgeted every year for enhancements for advanced utilities. They're the software firm that wrote and maintains the software that is what we internally call the CIS, the Customer Information System euphemistically referred to as the billing system. So that's twenty-five, that's thirty thousand of the forty thousand. It's almost, it's that specific planned items, it's nearly contingency money that something could come up in those areas where we need to replace chairs, buy some furniture, replace a five thousand dollar handheld.
Okay.
A bug or enhancements needed with the, the CIS, and, and we need to have the money in place to do it. The other ten thousand dollars, you haven't seen it yet, but I know this work has been done, or is in the, is in the, is in the works of being done, and that's replacing one of the servers for the CIS, and that's a ten thousand dollar item. So that's the forty thousand dollars.
So of the forty that is basically unexpended, because only sixty-one dollars was used...
So far, or through January, yes.
Yeah, um, yeah, through the end of January. Do you expect to, to utilize the rest of that between now and June thirtieth?
I doubt we'll spend all ten thousand dollars on furniture. There might be some furniture purchases. Five thousand dollars for a handheld will be, that's, that's no unless one breaks, and then yes. The fifteen thousand dollars for advanced utility enhancements, I don't believe we've identified any so far this year that, that need to be made.
So I guess in the answer to the question, you don't expect using the forty thousand dollars?
All of it, no.
Okay. But next year, you're asking for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Correct.
Four times that amount.
Correct.
So what would that be for?
Okay, that is for, there's two items in there that rely on share of that. One is fifty thousand dollars to upgrade the Oracle database that's used in the engineering section that runs our, what we call the, our AMFM Automated Mapping Facility Management program. Oracle ten is the version we're using now. It's, it soon will no longer be supported. The current version of Oracle is thirteen. So to bring that forward, three versions of Oracle, that's what it'll, it'll take to do. And then thirteen will be good for as long as they support it, and then we'll upgrade when, when it becomes unsupported.
So that's the whole...
No, that's fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Sixty-five thousand dollars then is to purchase what's called a distribution analysis package. This utility does not have an, has never had a modern, best way to describe it, is a calculator that can model the distribution system of the electric division and analyze voltage drops, load flows, how does the system perform if one does switching, changes the, the open and close points, add load here, et cetera. It, it's a tool that most distribution systems have and use every day, and it's overdue for us to purchase one. So that's a hundred and fifteen of the hundred and sixty-eight. The remaining funds are for, there is twenty-five thou, wait a minute, let me get it right. There's thirteen, twenty-three thousand dollars for twenty-three personal computer replacements. They happen to be ones of a certain age, between network machines and engineering department machines. It's time to replace them. And then there's, again, ten thousand dollars for miscellaneous furniture and equipment, five thousand dollars for a handheld meter-reading device.
Okay.
And I think that's, I think that's it.
The next line, similar sort of situation. That's the line three ninety-two.
Three ninety-two.
Yeah, last year you appropriated fifty thousand. You only spent seventy-two. So I guess the first stage is why?
Well, this, this is transportation, and that, that's based on just what vehicles or pieces of rolling stock are we, are we not replacing. So last year, we budgeted for a small SUV and, and a pickup, in the, or the, the year we're in right now. The year we're walking into, we're budgeting for two, two pickup trucks and replacing one of our line trucks, one of our Digger Derrick's, and that's expected to cost two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So the vehicles that you budgeted for last year, did you purchase them?
I, I don't know if we've taken delivery of this year's vehicles yet or not. Tony or Tom, do you know?
Yeah, I don't. You see where we stood with February? They were encumbered or not?
I don't think so.
No.
But I think that's happened recently, but not, not, it's happened since January, that the, the two pickup trucks have been bid and been encumbered.
They've been encumbered. What is your, what is your meaning of encumbered?
Well, the bid's been awarded, but we don't pay for the vehicle until it shows up. So the check doesn't get written. The money doesn't flow out of the budget until we, we pay the bill.
I see.
But a PO's been issued, so the funds are encumbered.
So I, you've contracted to get the vehicles?
In so many words.
That are in this budget?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. So then, um, just that I understand the process a little bit better, the, um, like with line three ninety-one, since more than likely most of that forty thousand dollars is not going to get expended this year, does, does that just go to retained earnings, or how does the electric division deal with that?
Three ninety-one, furniture and equipment, yes, if we don't ask to carry it forward, it would just not be spent, and I believe it would not be inappropriate to say it reversed the retained earnings. The cash is sitting there now, in so many words, but if we don't spend it, that's where it goes, yes.
And if, um, if you wanted to carry something forward, that would be shown on the appropriations enforced in the entire budget? Is that fair to say?
For certain accounts, yes, including three ninety-one.
Okay. Okay, at the bottom of page seventy-two, so on the bottom of page seventy-two, I see three ninety-one and three ninety-two again. So can you, can you explain line three ninety-one as it's shown there? Because that doesn't make sense to me. So comparing three ninety-one, last year, the amount that was appropriate... last year, the amount that was appropriated was forty thousand dollars. I would think the most that you could carry over from that to this would be forty thousand dollars.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is cumulative funds. Funds that need to be specially approved by the council to carry forward, um, well, all carry forward funds can carry forward three fiscal years after the year they are first appropriated. In all of the accounts where it's considered construction related, we don't have to ask for special permission for that. But there are certain accounts that are con-, not considered to be construction related. So they do need to be requested, and I think requested annually. So what you see here in that hundred thousand dollars, three, like three ninety-one, is accumulated funds from seventeen, eighteen, and possibly two previous fiscal years that we are asking to be allowed to carry forward.
But
I got that right?
But I thought, I had asked previously what the hundred and sixty-eight is going to be used for this being appropriated this year?
Correct.
And you went through a list, and it generally added up to a hundred and sixty-eight.
Correct.
Why are we carrying over another hundred thousand dollars when you're not using the forty from this year?
Well, there's, from previous years, there's a seventy-three thousand dollar item that we have not purchased yet that belongs in three ninety-one, and so that's the lion's share of that hundred thousand.
And what is that item?
It's what's called an IVR, an inter-, interactive voice response module. It would sit on top of our outage management system and assist with answering calls and sorting outages during high volume calls and large storm events.
And when did you request that?
Well, we budgeted it, I want to say two budgets ago. We just haven't gotten to specing it and bidding it and, and purchasing it.
Is there a reason? I, I would expect that, that when you asked for it, you needed it.
Oth-, other things get in the way. It's not a big staff, and we sometimes just can't get to everything we'd like to do.
Okay, the same thing with three ninety-two, we're carrying over twenty thousand dollars.
We have found it's always useful to have little more transportation money. Let me put it, say it this way. When there's leftover transportation funds, we like to carry them forward because sometimes vehicles cost more than we think they're going to, especially the large items like, like a two hundred and forty thousand dollar, uh, Digger Derrick truck. If we're off by ten percent on that estimate, now it's a two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar truck.
But you I don't know, that I would think that when you, you, you budgeted for that particular item, I mean, didn't you already give yourself cushion based upon what we talked about in three ninety-two? For that vehicle? Because I thought we, we dealt with, um, where most of the money was going, and there was about thirty, thirty thousand dollars left.
Well, there's the, 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 the two hundred, our estimated cost of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for that Digger Derrick, that's not the only vehicle we're looking to purchase.
Yeah, you, you listed, I thought, I thought it was like three vehicles.
Correct.
Yeah. I thought when I added up in my head, there was about thirty thousand dollars left over in there already as a cushion. I just don't, I don't know, I just, accounting wise, know that it's prudent to be carrying over prior years just in case with no appropriation. Alright. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else for the electric division? Counselor Luterno?
I, I just want to pick up on what Counselor Fishmine was, was going after. So we, we have accumulative years, two and three years. How far the back does the accumulation go to get to these, some of these figures? Are they, are they over three years or?
Carry forward funds can, can remain available for three fiscal years after the year, unspent. Capital carry forward funds. And then, and unencumbered are available for three fiscal years after the year in which they're appropriated.
And then what happens?
Then they, for lack of a better way to say it, fall off the end of the table.
Okay.
Lapse.
When they, when they lapse, where do they go?
Retained earnings.
Into your retained earnings?
Yes.
Unless it was encumbered, then it can carry over for that, yeah.
Say that again, I'm, I'm sorry, Tom.
Unless it were encumbered at the end of three years, then it could carry forward.
It can go into a fourth year?
Well, if it's encumbered, it's committed. We are under contract.
Right, under contract, okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else for the electric division? Thank you very much. Up next is water.
I think you two should be separated.
And if you could just let us know who is joining Mr. Hendershot?
Neil Amick, General Manager for the Water and Sewer Divisions.
Bill Phelan, Office Manager, Water and Sewer Division.
Thank you. Do you have an introductory remarks, and, um, I presume we're going to flow from water directly into sewer?
We, we are, and we'd like to, we'd like to keep it though, and thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Chairman. Yes, one of the things I was going to mention in my opening remarks is we'd like to, like to keep it one division at a time if, if we could, and I gather that's your intent, so we, we appreciate that, that structure. Um, unlike the previous budget with, with chime very familiar, as, as you might imagine, um, and, and Mr. Bukyari is doing a great job, but it's, the process is somewhat new, so I, I, I sort of stepped in front of him for this one. I suspect next year that, that won't be nearly the case. But this evening, I will let Mr. Zamake and Phelan, um, answer your questions. Um, I would, I would like to say that, um, just like with electric, the, um, uh, the, the revenues are based largely on a, you know, bottom-up forecast of, of sales, you know, water production, and then therefore actual use of sewer services. The, the rates which are not changing are then applied, and that's how the revenues are arrived at. Other than that, I'll, I'll just turn it over to, to any questions.
Sure. Counselor Fishmine, we're doing water first.
Yes, fine, thank you. Uh, good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
The, um, looking at page seventy-three, line four seven two, rents from water property, what is that?
I don't like, I don't like being separate here.
I'm sorry, uh, Counselor, those, those, that revenue represents monies that we receive from various, um, cellular companies, including Schnet, um, T-Mobile, and, um, Sprint.
Right.
Um, Frontier as well. Um, for the, mainly for the Young's Apple Orchard Tower on the watershed property. There is other revenue that's, uh, derived from revenue on the West Side Tank. There are some antennas on that as well.
So who, who owns those, um, the infrastructure?
The water divi-
Water division, because it's water division property?
Correct.
And the water division erected them, or?
The water division erected the towers and the tanks. Naturally, the communications companies themselves installed the antennas.
Okay, I, I didn't, perhaps I missed, it's on a, it's on a water tank.
Um, the West Side Tank has some antennas on it, yes, but there's a tower on the, what they call the Young's Apple Orchard, which is on the watershed property. It's not a, it's not a water tank per se.
Okay. The, um, on page seventy-six, there, there is no line number. Uh, contribution and aid, it's the, um, third line down of numbers. What is that?
When the water division installs, um, services, water services and meters for new customers, they are reimbursed those costs from the customers. And those revenues are identified as a, both a use of funds and a source of funds in that particular section.
Okay, so pass through. Uh, what's the attributable, um, understanding that the, um, source of funds is, is income?
Correct.
Correct. Um, contribution and aid, what's the attributable line below to the use of funds? Is there a corresponding line?
Yes, because what happens is the costs associated with installing those water lines. Our la-, the labor costs, material costs, and equipment costs are shown in the use of funds section.
Yeah, is there a particular line? Because the numbers aren't the same. I'm just wondering, um.
Um, no, it does not go into any particular revenue light item. Um, it is strictly a pass-through. So it, it's shown as both the identical numbers for a source of funds and a use of funds, but it is not identified as a revenue item in any of the budgeted line items.
Okay, just, um, so looking at twenty eighteen, nineteen, for the contribution and aid, you asked for a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars and, and change as, as income. Is, is there a portion down below where that one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars is, is used up or used out?
It's this, it's this, it's the last line before the summation.
Capital, capital additions from contributions.
Got it, okay, that makes sense. So then, um, I would expect that the income comes in
From the customers who are actually
But it's after the work is done, correct?
Uh, actually, it's before the work is done.
Okay, so then because I'm just comparing the actual one thirty-one eighteen in those two lines. And I guess they aren't the same because the income, and you probably have payments from last year.
That's correct.
Okay.
And they don't always match because a budget, uh, our source of funds, or I'm sorry, our use of funds is what we expect to use. It's not always what we actually install on, on a customer's premises. I couldn't tell you exactly how many services we're going to install next year. So naturally, we, we're, we're estimating based on history, and then with that, we'll, we'll estimate that the revenues are going to be identical.
So when you say to someone who's building a development or something like that, you need us to pay X to, to put in the lines, and, uh, whi-, which would be shown above, but the expenses are in excess. What do you do? Do you go back to the developer, or do you transfer?
No, we actually have a rate structure that is, um, has been approved and is in effect for any construction type activities. So, um, we don't actually then square up on each individual service installation, the actual hour spent. So it is a flat fee for a certain service.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for the water division? Questions for the sewer division? Counselor Luterno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, maybe I'm not looking in the right place, but, um, I couldn't find anything in the budget for the, um, I see the I and I, but I don't see anything for the, um, phosphate where that's going forward. And do we have anything in the budget for that that?
No, we do not. That, that's, it's anticipated that will be handled through a funding ordinance.
I'm sorry?
It's anticipated that the, the funding for that as it moves forward will be handled via a funding ordinance.
Okay.
My understanding is that stands separately and somewhat outside the budget process.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Any questions, other questions for the sewer division?
Just, just so we can clarify something, we're now spending money, however, that's in the current year budget, right?
That's correct.
So there was money in the current year budget, but not future expenses?
That's correct.
Correct. Where, where, where does that show, where would that show in here?
It's in the capital account, I'll tell you in a second. It's line item four six three, three three one.
And what, what, do you know what page that is?
Uh, as you were.
It appears that the budget pages for the sewer division, or the water division for that matter, do not reflect the previous year's capital expenditure dollars. On page, I'm, I'm sorry, on page eighty-two of the sewer division budget, the only year showing there is two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and forward. So you're actually, um, it's being masked because the seventeen, eighteen budget is not showing there. But there is an appropriation of six hundred and, I believe it's uh, well, there's two different years. Uh, in the prior year, we had budgeted five hundred thousand dollars and then came back, if the council recalls this year, for an additional six hundred thousand dollars. So in two different years, we have a total of one point one million dollars for the phosphorus facility plan.
Thank you. Mr. Bose, why was, why was that not included in here?
Well, capital items, uh, come to you as, uh, to be approved in the budget document for the division to do that. The basis of accounting is very, very different than it is for general fund accounting or general government type of accounting, or let's just call it nonutility accounting, because the assets are capitalized. Costs that go into development of a capital asset or, um, the purchase of a capital asset are, end up on the balance sheet. Where you end up seeing cost is over the estimated useful life of that asset in depreciation expense. That's where you see those, and I don't know what pages those are on, but those are in front of you as well. And I'm sorry for that bookkeeping attempt, attempt at a bookkeeping listener. You're also, but, but, but the plan, it, it's a five-year expenditure plan, and it's looking from the current year request that's in front of you, eighteen, nineteen, going to twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four.
I, I see that.
So that, yeah.
But it would have been nice to have, you know, the prior years in front of us too. If we, if we have future years in front of us, we should have the prior years.
Yeah, and, and as Mr. Hendershot is pointing out, there is a little bit of room there, and we could possibly do something for that in the future for you, absolutely, but.
Can we, um, you know, can we get that before the budget's over? I mean, you know?
Before you guys have to meet, uh, we can, can, can you turn that around for us?
I can absolutely, I'll add that information to you.
Okay, good. If you can get it through the council office and she'll
Certainly.
Bill, Bill and I can work on it. We can get it into this format. We can get it to Barbara and then
Great.
Get it out, sure.
That would be great. Okay. I just want to take a look at it.
Absolutely.
I don't know, we might have to come back again, I don't know.
Sure, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for the sewer division? There being none, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.